All right, we may as well get started. I don't know, is this working? Can you, can everyone hear me?
No.
No? I have a mic here, so I think it's working. Is that better? No, yes? Is that good? Okay, I'll use that. Welcome to the special town meeting for the town of Norfolk. My name is Jay Talaman. I'm your moderator. I'd like to call the meeting to order. I declare that the warrant has been duly posted and published and that the reading of the warrant is hereby waived. If we may stand and give pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Introduce a few of the players here tonight. To my left is Carol Green and Anthony Turry from the Town Clerk's office. To their left, we've got the Board of Selectmen, Kevin Calcutt, Chris Weider, and C.C. Van Tyne, Town Administrator, Blithe Robinson, Town Council, Peter Mello, who is new to our meeting, say hello to Peter, and Todd Linmark, our Finance Director. On the floor, below the stage, is the Advisory Board chaired by Arthur Fruntzak. Tellers, if we need them, are Andy Bakianowski and Paul Terrio. So, a few rules for the meeting tonight. We are governed by, not by Robert's Rules of Order, but by town meeting time, as well as some, a few local bylaws. I'll explain procedures as needed, but if people have a question, a point of order, rise and say "point of order" and we'll help you out. Points of order are reserved, however, for purely procedural matters and not to discuss the merits or subject matter of any articles. All motions tonight will be made by the Advisory Board. We will have a few motions for indefinite postponement tonight. That is a motion to effectively kill an article or to pass over an article. And there will be some discussion of those in a moment. Those who make the motion will have the first opportunity to speak and explain what that motion is for and what that article is for, and then we will open it up to the floor, or in the case of zoning articles, likely to the Planning Board first. Motions to amend generally must be in writing, provided that for ministerial or clerical corrections, I will accept friendly amendments. And, as always, myself and Carol and Anthony can help you with the procedure. If you need forms or paper to prepare a motion to amend, we can help you out with that. We're going to have debate back and forth. I will try and balance discussion as best I can between pros and cons and just simple questions, so that we can have roundout discussion. Everyone has a chance to speak on a matter, but at a certain point, I want to avoid repetition, and I might ask if there's anything new, or anyone who wants to say something new. You have a maximum of five minutes to the mic your first time up, three minutes for the second time. I'll make exceptions if it's particularly weighty matter, in the same token, if I think that you're getting repetitive, or you don't need all of that time, I will let you know that as well. I may allow someone with info, new info, or to respond to a question to speak a third time, but under the bylaws, those are the general limits. All comments and questions go through myself. I don't want people talking over each other. When you come up to the mic the first time, give your name and address, at least the first time you speak. I hope we can have a spirited debate, and I support challenging and discussion, but nothing personal is allowed here. No personal comments. All comments must be civil and respectful. I want to hear your facts. I want to hear your opinions. What I don't want to hear is what you think someone else's opinion is. So keep it to your own point of view, please. We have a number of local officials, both that both live in town, as well as are seated in the visitors' section, and between myself and them, we will try and get any questions answered if you have them. As far as voting goes, I will always try and count a vote first by voice. If I can, I may ask for a show of hands. If that doesn't work, I may ask you to stand. If I still can't tell what the vote is, we may count, we may have the tellers count. I do respect a call of the question or a motion to cut off debate, but if I feel it's premature, I may let a few questions go and I'll hold that motion in abeyance. Also, if there's no one lined up at the mics and you make that question, we may just move right past it without the need to take a vote. That does require a two-thirds vote. Let's let everyone talk, but I do respect that motion if you wish to make it. If I'm, if I'm hearing a lot of the same comment over and over again, I might just cut off debate on my own without the need for a motion. There is a number of handouts that are available. There's going to be a lot of information on the screen. That said, we're here to answer your questions and help you along with this. There's a bit of business to be conducted tonight, but I know we will get through it all. So, the first, a little bit different this year, the first six articles on the warrant are zoning articles. All six of those articles will be moved for indefinite postponement, i.e. moving past them, because they are still works in progress. Normally, I would go to the motion first, but because all of those articles are somewhat related, I thought I would afford the Planning Board an opportunity to address where they are on those articles, what they were, and where they're going in the future on that. So, Mr. Byron from the Planning Board would like to address the meeting before we get to motions.
Thank you, Mr. Talaman. My name is Walter Byron. I'm Chairman of the Planning Board, and I'd like to give you just a brief background. About nine months ago, a committee was formed to see if the zoning bylaws in the downtown district, that's the B-1 district, could be made more amenable to achieving the long-term objective for the town center, which is that Norfolk citizens would like its town center developed into a traditional pedestrian-oriented New England village with retail, commercial services, and mixed uses, including housing, that provides for social and cultural interaction for all age groups. That statement has been in the master plan since, I believe, 1992. Now, the fruits of the committee's efforts resulted in proposed changes to those bylaws that were subsequently reviewed by the Planning Board at our meetings and at a public hearing on the 28th of October. Further adjustments to the language were made along the way, and reviews were also completed at a Select Board meeting and an Advisory Board meeting. All along the review path, concerns were raised that the proposed bylaw changes were too restrictive or too loose, and that there would be unforeseen and unintended consequences if they were adopted. Serious attempts were made to plug any holes in the language that were recognized, but in the final analysis, the Planning Board decided that the best option is to take more time to consider the concerns raised and to further work on defining the language of those six articles. Hence, the recommendation by the Planning Board to indefinitely postpone them. The objective of the postponement is to do that committee work, revise the language, and bring them back to the spring town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Byron. So, without further ado, we're going to go to the motions themselves. There will be six motions for indefinite postponement in a row. If you have any questions on, just on indefinite postponement, not the articles, the meat of the articles themselves, we can discuss them, but we're really just moving past these. Mr. Lutz, motion on Article 1.
Mr. Moderator, I move to indefinitely postpone Article 1.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of indefinite postponement say aye? All those opposed? It does pass unanimously. Article 2, Mr. Lutz.
Mr. Moderator, I move to indefinitely postpone Article 2.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye? All those opposed? It does pass unanimously. Article 3.
Mr. Moderator, I move to indefinitely postpone Article 3.
Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, oh, Mr. Diamond?
May I approach the mic?
You may, as always.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Of course.
This, we're on Article 3. Good evening, residents and guests. My name is Peter Diamond, and I live on Secong Street.
So, Peter, just, and I'm happy to have you talk. So, just on the question of timing with the indefinite postponement, because that's the motion on the floor. So I don't want to debate B-1 or any of these things too much.
It's a comment. Will you allow a comment, Mr. Moderator?
I will, indeed.
Okay, thank you. I have lived in Norfolk for more than 50 years, and I grew up on Main Street in the B-1 downtown district. I remember when Main Street had no stop at the intersection of 115, and I could drive right through on the way to Franklin. Norfolk is a small-town bedroom community and has been for almost its 150-year existence. I have enjoyed the small-town character of Norfolk for my lifetime here, and I would say most of you that live here for that reason, too. There have been two past town meetings where warrant articles sought to amend Norfolk bylaw I-4A-11, which only allowed residential density of 16 bedrooms per lot. These warrant articles sought to increase density to 32 bedrooms per lot. The first article was on November 29, 2012, and the second article was on May 8, 2013. Both times, the people of Norfolk voted against such an increase in density in the downtown district. The November vote was 47 nay, 36 yea, and the May 2013 vote was 51 nay, 25 yea, far below the two-thirds required to pass the articles. At the May 13, 2014 annual meeting, a citizen petition I submitted passed to delete zoning law, bylaw I-7A-1, which allowed residential only in the B-1 outside the business core by special permit. The article passed 68 yes to 29 no. The zoning bylaw articles that are postponed here this evening in general were created to increase density in the downtown B-1 district, residential density. It is claimed that the downtown needs more residential density so the local business can thrive and the center will be more vibrant. Well, I argue that the center is vibrant. We have many businesses that do very well. We have Bork, Sillers, Norfolk Pizza, Dunkin' for Food. We have Norfolk Food Mart. We have Lindes, Norfolk Pizza and Dunkin' for Food. And we have multiple banks and many other local businesses that serve the community. If there is a shortcoming for any local businesses, it's not the lack of density. I would say it is internet commerce, in my opinion. The center comes alive on Thursday nights in the summer with the concert series the Recreation Commission organizes. There has been a farmer's market in the past couple of years, and the library hosts many activities. There's Kids Place, which is always full. On Sundays, there's mass at three churches in the area, along with the Grange Hall that hosts Sunday Mass with many residents out and about. The Norfolk Lions are selling Christmas trees downtown, and we will have the Santa coming to town with the big parade and the tree lighting ceremony soon. You see, Norfolk is vibrant and very much alive with activity. These proposed zoning articles will only bring congestion to the downtown. More traffic and less water. There was no traffic study or impact that this may have on town services, such as the schools. And who is going to pay for the traffic lights downtown when the congestion gets to be more than our little roundabouts can handle? Another argument for the proposed changes in the downtown zoning is the changes needed to counter 40B development. The proposed zoning changes will bring as-of-right developers that will have the same density as a 40B development without the affordable housing that 40B requires. For every 40B apartment development, the town realizes 100% of the apartments towards have required 10% state mandates. That will not be the result of as-of-right dense development. There is not anything the town of Norfolk can do at the local level to stop 40B development. The change needs to happen at the state level. For that, I have submitted legislation through the Representative Sean Dooley for a change. This is House Bill Number 1268. Call the state politicians for support on this change. The current zoning in the downtown allowed 18 Union Street. Many of you are familiar with that.
We are getting close to your time, so if we could...
Wrapping up right here, Mr. Moderator. This is a beautiful addition to our downtown B-1 district with four businesses and eight apartments. And in my opinion, the zoning we have works for Norfolk. So I stand here before you tonight in opposition of any change in the downtown B-1 zoning, and I support indefinite postponement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diamond. Seeing no further comments on the motion to indefinitely postpone, all those in favor say aye? All those opposed? It passes unanimously. Article 4, Mr. Lutz.
Mr. Moderator, I move to indefinitely postpone Article 4.
Seeing no comments, all those in favor say aye? All those opposed? It passes. Article 5, Mr. Lutz.
Mr. Moderator, I move to indefinitely postpone Article 5.
Seeing no comments, all those in favor say aye? All those opposed? It passes unanimously. Article 6.
Mr. Moderator, I move to indefinitely postpone Article 6.
Seeing no comments, all those in favor say aye? All those opposed? It passes unanimously as well. Article 7, Mr. Lutz.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 7 as printed in the warrant.
Second, Mr. Lutz, do you have a synopsis, or you want me to defer to the Planning Board?
I would just like to say that the Planning Board discussed this at our meeting. It creates a new joint review process for site plan reviews between the building inspector and town planner, allowing a second set of eyes on these matters.
Mr. Byron, does the Planning Board have any comment, or do you have a recommendation on these?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Experiences recognize the need to strengthen the site plan approval bylaw, and this Article 7, which is supported by all five members of the Planning Board, has three primary objectives towards that goal. First, it requires that each and every commercial property in town have a site plan approved by the Planning Board. Some older properties do not, and the existing language might allow that to continue. Secondly, in the case of a change of use of a commercial property, the new language clarifies and removes some of the subjectivity from the criteria for these three existing possible outcomes of such a review. The three outcomes might be site plan approval not required, site plan modification approval required, or site plan full approval required, the latter two requiring a presentation in front of the Planning Board. Thirdly, this article adds the town planner to the building commissioner, who was also the zoning enforcement officer, to the change of use review process to provide another experienced professional to evaluate proposed changes. So here's why this article is the right solution to strengthening this review process. First, all proposed changes in the building occupancy will continue to receive a written decision now within 15 days of application versus 30. But more than half of those changes fall into the site plan approval not required category and do not necessitate a planning board review and approval. Second, should the proposed change require the planning board review and approval, two experienced professionals will see that the planning board review is accomplished. Third, should there be a disagreement between the two reviewers, the Planning Board is in a position to settle the decision. And fourth, the two professionals have, both have the experience of walking the sites and buildings in the field that is necessary for a thorough and accurate decision on the proposed change of use. And last, the two professionals are in the office daily and are available to expeditiously review proposed changes with the property owners without having to wait for a planning board meeting down the road, something which will be of help to the businesses in town. So the Planning Board approves this article as written and asks for your vote of approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Byron. Any comments or further discussion on this article? Ms. Whitney?
Elizabeth Whitney, 26 Valley Street, Ponville. I spent longer than I think I've ever spent studying any town warrant, studying this article. And I'm happy to say that the previous speaker agrees with me. I think this is an enormous improvement, and I strongly suggest the passage of Article 7. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whitney. Any other comments, discussion, questions? Seeing none, this requires a two-thirds vote in that it's a zoning amendment. All those in favor say aye? All those opposed? Article 8, parking areas under zoning. Mr. Lutz.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 8 as printed in the warrant.
Mr. Lutz?
This has changed the responsibility for reviewing special permits for parking requirements from the Zoning Board of Appeals to the Planning Board. The committee felt that this was a sensible and necessary change.
Mr. Byron, recommendation of the Planning Board? Thank you. Any comments, questions on Article 8? Also requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor say aye? All those opposed, no? It passes unanimously. Article 9, zoning map adjustment. Mr. Lutz?
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 9 as printed in the warrant.
Mr. Lutz?
The Advisory Committee supports this article because it's essentially a requirement for us to have the well, the new Hoboken well on our zoning maps, and this is what this is.
Mr. Byron, recommendation of the Planning Board? Any questions, comments on Article 9? Seeing none, requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor say aye? All those opposed? It passes unanimously. Article 10, Mr. Fruntzak? Or is this still Mr. Lutz?
Mr. Moderator, I approve, I move to approve Article 10 as printed in the warrant.
Mr. Lutz?
Similar to the previous article, it updates the zoning map to reflect changes that we need to approve our zoning, our new well.
Mr. Byron, recommendation of the Planning Board? Thank you. Any further comments, questions on Article 10? Seeing none, requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor say aye? All those opposed? It also passes unanimously. Article 11, Mr. Fruntzak?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer the sum of $324,177.57 as displayed on the screen and provided in the handout.
These are departmental transfers, and I believe they are printed on the screen. There is also some handouts available. Mr. Fruntzak?
These are mid-year budget adjustments requested by the town administrator. The Advisory Board reviewed them and unanimously approved.
Any questions, comments? Come to the mic, please? Yeah, just come all the way to the mic and your name, please.
Tom Balone, 62 Wildwood. I see the numbers here. I would like to know why you're transferring the monies from one budget to another budget. For instance, the Advisory Board Reserve. What do they need that for?
So whoever could answer these, Ms. Robinson?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory Committee starts its year annually with a budget with an amount in the reserve fund of $50,000. That is for unforeseen expenses that may come up during the year. We had one earlier this summer where a server at Town Hall failed and needed to be replaced. We took the money initially out of the, with the Advisory Committee's approval, took those monies out of that reserve fund to pay for that replacement, and subsequent to that, an insurance claim that we made was successful, and we've received those monies back. So what we'd like to do is transfer those monies back to the reserve fund for the rest of the fiscal year, so if any other unforeseen situations arise, we, the Advisory Committee has $50,000 to be able to appropriate.
I was a senior financial analyst quite a while ago. It's back in my past history. And I was on my, the VAR Board as the Treasurer. And I'm looking at all of the expenses, like town council services and fire department salaries, which I totally don't understand, because that should have been in your budget in the first place. So I don't know why you had another $34,000 in there. The Advisory Board Reserve, you should have had a reserve that you, was based upon past history, and that is a relatively significant reserve you'd already set up. So the $13,000, I don't understand. And basically, if your, if your budgeting process had been appropriate, then you shouldn't have anywhere near $324,000 being transferred into those specific accounts. That's significant. That's not little. We're not talking about 50,000. That, to me, indicates very, very, very poor budgeting. And I don't know how anybody can go around that one, because that's pretty significant. So the question I have is, why weren't those initially in the budget? I mean, I can understand a reserve. I can't understand the rest of that.
So I may, I'll allow her to answer, of course, as she sees fit, or the Advisory Board. I will point out, for the benefit of the town meeting, that under Massachusetts law, the big number here, snow and ice, you're allowed to run a deficit. It's one of the few things, in fact, maybe the only thing, where a city or town can actually run a deficit and then catch up in the following season. So that's the big chunk here that is typical among communities. I'll let Ms. Robinson respond as she sees fit to any of your other comments.
So let me ask a question. Last year didn't seem to be a very significant amount of snowfall. I know, based upon my budget that I had at our village, okay, which we pay for ourselves because you don't do our streets. That's not a shock. That's a fact. Okay?
So hold on just one second, because I'd like you, because as I mentioned in the rules, you talked to me, and we'll, let's get some of your initial questions.
So the question I have is, you are $235,000 over budget on the snow budget. Correct? Correct? Which means, indicates to me that nobody did very much research on the amount of snow, primarily because it was below average or met average last year. So it should not be over and above your last year's, yes, true, $235,000. And the rest of it, which equates to $90,000 over budget, I don't understand. So in essence, I don't understand any of that. And oh, by the way, where did you get all of the, was there a lot of fat in the certified free cash or the budget $65,000 for King Philip? Because if that had been budgeted properly, then you wouldn't be able to take the money, $65,000, out of there to put it into those accounts.
Okay. So there is more than one question there. I will again submit that people underfund the snow and ice budget traditionally municipalities. Again, we're in a unique position. If Ms. Robinson wants to explain what free cash is or otherwise respond to your questions in a general sense, great. Otherwise, I really respectfully suggest that, that after the, this town meeting, please get involved with understanding municipal finance and attending these meetings. I find them interesting. I might be in a minority. We will get your question answered, but a lot of these are basic municipal finance questions, and I view the purpose of the town meeting to respond to specifics as much as possible. So with that, Ms. Robinson, if you want to respond generally, and then I think I'd like to move on to the next speaker over here.
So through you, Mr. Moderator. I'll answer the question on free cash and the snow and ice deficit to start, since those are the biggest numbers that are on the screen, and we can, I'll defer to you as to whether we go further. Free cash is a, is a term of art in Massachusetts municipal law, which allows for any additional revenues the town receives over what it budgeted, or any expense budgets or salary budgets that were underspent at the end of the fiscal year, get reported to the state, and those, those monies are then certified as what the state calls free cash. The only way free cash can be... The only way free cash can be spent is at town meeting in an action just like this to cover any costs that the town may have in its next year. Our free cash was certified in October this year at about $1.1 million. I'm afraid I don't have the exact number right in front of me. And we have, are asking the town to be able to spend it on these, on some of it, on these various things. As the moderator pointed out, the town budgets annually for snow and ice removal services, and we budget $250,000 a year. Under state law, you, once you set an amount for snow and ice, you can, you can overspend that amount, you can deficit spend it, as the moderator mentioned, but only if you at least budget what you did before. And so it's a bit of a, experience goes into deciding what, what the right amount is to not tax people too much for, if it doesn't snow, but be able to overspend it if it does. I would agree that last year was not as snowy as other winters, but I do believe that we had a fair number of events where our equipment needed to go out and sand and salt icy roads. And if you have further questions, I think the DPW Director, Mr. McGee, can answer those more specifically. But yes, we overspent the budget by $235,000, and state law allows us to then determine, cover that deficit at a meeting such as this.
I understand. I'm just saying, just for one minute.
Through me.
Through you.
So again, I don't want to back.
No, no issue. No issue. I will do that. The snow budget, again, I don't understand it, because there is no way in God's green planet that should, should be $235,000 over the snow budget that you have, if you had done it properly. And apparently, it wasn't done properly. Because if it, I would like, has anybody ever done a study, year to year, as to how much you've spent, like we have, where we are? Okay, so we have an idea of where we're going to be and what the actual expenditures were versus the budget? Because we do it by inch.
So let's, I, I understand your question. I'm quite sure that they do those studies. What I'd like to do, if you have a, if you have a follow-up question, that's great. I want to go to Mr. Rosenberg, who's been waiting.
No, I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
No, no. What I want to do is go to Mr. Rosenberg to ask his question.
Okay.
Mr. McGee is right behind you. If you want to have a quick sidebar with him, he's our DPW Director.
Yeah.
Can maybe help clear some things up.
Thank you.
Otherwise, I'd like to allow Mr. Rosenberg to ask his question.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm David Rosenberg, 123 North Street. I have a question about the transfer from the information technology expense. In particular, I wonder whether there was some anticipated either service or product that we were intending to buy, that we didn't buy or didn't need, that has resulted in the availability of that money to transfer from information technology expense.
Is there anyone that can answer that question? Ms. Robinson?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. The $11,522.50 was the amount we received back from the insurance company for the failed server. So we simply want to transfer those funds back into the advisory committee reserve account.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg. Mr. McGee?
How you doing? Bob McGee, Director of Public Works. Just to answer some of your questions here, and going, before we get to the, to snow, some of the things that, you know, just as a matter of fact, when budgets are prepared, the, it starts around October. So we're preparing a budget for, for the following fiscal year, which is six months later. For instance, I can't speak for the fire department, but in the, for the Department of Public Works, since we started putting the budget together for the FY20, for FY20, we had four retirements. And we didn't know who we were going to hire, how many people we were going to hire. We had to re-staff. So we weren't going to go scramble and put together a budget, you know, just before the spring town meeting. So in our case, we gave money back to the town, to the tune of $70,000, but you just, you won't see it there. But as far as the snow and ice goes, every year, we're probably overspending right around that amount for the last 10 years. What it, what we do is, like you said, it's the only budget that we can deficit spend. And we appropriate, say, 10 years ago, when I first came here, 12 years ago, we had $100,000, $125,000. We brought it up to $150,000. Finally, we're up to about $250,000, or 200, I'm not sure what we had last year. And every single year, I can tell you that we've always spent the snow to the tune of $200,000 on average. And that's almost like planning. It's unfortunate. Last year, we had snow and ice events, which we would rather have had 20 feet of snow, as opposed to 16 snow and ice events, which really emptied our salt sheds. So quite a bit of that is in materials. And we bit out the salt, and the sand's inexpensive, but the salt is probably one-third of that expense alone. But.
Thank you, Mr. McGee.
You bet. Any last final question or comment? Sir, you have a question? Come on up to the mic.
I'll return.
Hi, it's Anthony Kennedy, 7 Margaux Way. It was mentioned that the free cash was approximately $1.1 million. Can I assume the remainder was, is going to stabilization? Or if you're using $247,000?
You cannot assume that, because that would require a town meeting vote.
So what becomes of the remainder between the $1.1 million and the $247,000?
Stays in free cash.
So through you, Mr. Moderator. We are spending some of it also in the Article 17 for various capital items. The plan is to spend a little less than half of the free cash at this point in the year. We don't know what the winter's going to bring. We want to be prepared for that in case it is, you know, a bad one, and we do need to overspend that budget, as well as putting together our budget for FY21, and making sure that we're prepared for any other unforeseen situations that might come up throughout the rest of the fiscal year.
So as a matter of practice, it does not go to stabilization?
As the, through you, Mr. Moderator, it would need to be done in a separate article voted by town meeting. I think that requires a two-thirds vote.
It only requires a majority vote in, but the, the key to stabilization is it requires a two-thirds vote out. So it's your true, like, put nest egg kind of money that, that we, we stockpile for helping our bond rating and other matters.
Yeah, but there is no article like that for tonight, then?
Not, not that I'm aware of, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any further questions?
Yes.
On Article 11?
Donna Jones, North Street. I know it's allowed to be overspent. Is there a drawback to putting more money in there? And what would happen if we did overallocate for the account?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. That's a very good question. So each year, the town can decide to increase the amount, but in order to deficit spend it, it can't go, it can't reduce it in a future year. So it's a little bit of an art and a science to determining how much you might need to spend versus how much you want to tax residents in anticipation of snow and ice that may not come. So the town has, at this point, has chosen to spend $250,000 per year, and certainly that can be revisited every year as we go forward.
A comment of, the annual report comes out with the budget that we, as taxpayers, allocate for the, the annual budget. So those taxpayers that showed up and voted in the spring approved this, and we approved the, what we allocated to accounts.
Great. Thank you. Sir?
Ed Head, 138 Red Maple Run. Mr. Moderator, since the question of free cash has come up, can I ask a question about free cash?
Sure, but if we can get it answered for you.
Okay. I, I get the question is, is $235,000, or whatever was taken out of free cash, if free cash is not used and remains in excess at the end of the fiscal year, does it go back into, against the next year's budget, or does it just sit as a reserve forever and ever, and just keep building?
Every year, we go through the same process with the state to report our turnbacks, whatever free cash we didn't spend, whatever under expenditures we had, and they recertify free cash every year. So it's not available.
So what happens to it, though?
Excuse me?
What happens to it? Does it go against the next budget, or does it just stay in a reserve account?
Essentially stays in. It is not spent as part of the budget.
So it just stays to be available for?
We had, we had $136,000 lapsed from FY19, and then became part of certified free cash this year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further, well, here's one.
Hi, I'm Jessica Watson at 21 Castle. Could you help me understand the King Philip regional budget? Why we're taking money from there, which I've always understood is at a deficit?
Mr. Lynn Marcus, are you jumping to the mic, or Ms. Robinson?
So last year, we had to do our budget for King Philip. We went through the process with the three towns. Town of Norfolk votes their budget first. We voted at a higher rate of the 3.5% that they were looking for. The other two towns voted at a lower rate. So unfortunately, we have, or fortunate for us, but unfortunate for KP, we have to go with the 3%, which means we're not going to have monies that are needed in the KP budget to the tune of $65,579.
So in other words, the school can't just, because we appropriated, the school doesn't get to take the extra amount that we appropriated. But we also can't spend it on something else unless this town meeting takes a vote to move it to another line item?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Seeing no further comments, some good discussion there. Article 11 requires a simple majority. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no?
No.
It passes by an overwhelming majority. Article 12, unpaid bills from a prior year. Mr. Fruntzak.
I move to indefinitely postpone Article 12.
Is there a second? Mr. Fruntzak.
This article exists to pay unpaid bills, of which there are none.
So no unpaid bills right now. It's a good thing. Seeing no comments, all those in favor of indefinite postponement, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes unanimously. Article 13, ride-sharing funds. Mr. Huff.
Moderator, I move to appropriate the sum of $1,208.20 from the Commonwealth Transportation Infrastructure Fund to purchase a solar-powered speed control sign.
Mr. Huff?
So the advisory committee supports the use of the $1,208.20 from the Commonwealth Transportation Infrastructure Fund for transportation-related expenses like buying signs or other small things.
Thank you. Any comments, questions further on Article 13? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? It passes unanimously. Article 14.
Mr. Moderator, I move to appropriate the sum of $8,600 from free cash to purchase a trailer-mounted message board sign.
Mr. Huff?
The advisory committee supports having a second message board trailer to assist in emergency management, road safety, and other town messaging. The $8,600 spent with the passing of this article will, will be matched by a grant. If the town doesn't spend the money on the message board trailer, we will lose the grant.
Any questions, comments on Article 14, another sign? Mr. Rosenberg?
So do I understand correctly, then, that the cost of this trailer is, in fact,
Anyone answer that? Ms. Robinson?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. It's $18,600, a $10,000 state grant, and $8,600 from the town of Norfolk.
Thank you. Question, comment, right here.
So where is this other sign going to go? I mean, right now, the sign is often at the police station, the old police station. Where will the new sign go, that it makes sense to have just two? Maybe we should have five?
It's, I think it's going to be in our trailer, so I'm going to guess it's going to move around. But anyone from, anyone want to discuss this, talk about it? Mr. McGee?
Hi, Bob McGee, Director of Public Works. This is just one of those things where, if we could have a third one, I'd take it. It's just, there's so much information that we need to get out to the town for the so many things that we do between the police station, road building, even just to have that planted down at our transfer station to inform people of the hours of operation. But this will probably stay warm in our, I'll probably arm wrestle with the police chief on this, but probably stay at the DPW bond. And that'll last us quite a, quite a long time.
Do you want to include that in a motion somehow to take ownership of that, Bob? Any other, does that help answer your question? So a little unclear, but if you, you want it someplace else, call Bob up. He'll, I'm sure he'll give you his cell phone in a little bit. I, I'm pretty sure they're going to put it to good use. Any questions, further questions, comments on this article? Come on up.
Hi, Jeff Burkner, Wampanoag Avenue. Have we shopped around for this? I mean, I don't really know what these things cost, but 18,000 for a sign seems like a lot of money. And also, who's going to maintain this should it break?
I don't know who, if you want to respond.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, we, we have shopped around. We wanted to get one of appropriate size, and that somewhat drives the cost to make sure that we can get the information Mr. McGee spoke about, whether it's an emergency or a road closure, or something at the transfer station. Generally, these will be maintained by the, the police department, they, or DPW, they will be hitched to, they're on trailer mounts, will be hitched to a truck and taken to where they need to be deployed for whatever that period is, and taken back. The state grant doesn't include any funds for maintenance. I would have to speak, I would have to defer to either the police chief or DPW about whether the, the sign we have now has required much maintenance.
Yeah, I'm just concerned about the expense of any repairs that might be needed should it break.
Anything further? Seeing no further questions or comments, all those in favor of passage, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes by a majority. Article 15, Mr. Huff?
Mr. Moderator, I move to appropriate the sum of $17,000 from free cash to conduct a human resources classification and compensation plan review, to be matched by $5,000 from a human resources grant for a total project cost of $22,000.
Mr. Huff?
The advisory committee believes that having a 17-year-old classification, job description, and compensation system hampers the town's ability to operate efficiently. The current system creates a, a number of human resources challenges, such as recruiting, compensating, training, and managing employees, and may expose the town to compliance risks. The town would like to complete the modernization project before contracting with the Clerical Employee Union in the summer of 2021. The cost of the project will be $22,000, $5,000, which could be covered through the remaining money in the state community grant.
Thank you. Questions? Come on up, sir.
Question I have is, after you complete the human resources classification and compensation plan, and you find possibly that all of your employees are like $5,000 to $10,000 under a competitive plan, which I'm assuming that's what it's for, does that mean that you're going to increase the salaries of your employees currently under contract with you?
Well, we, we might have to wait for the spring town meeting for that, but if anyone has a question or comment on, on the stage for next steps after this study is done, I'm all ears.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. No, the goal is, is not to, to get to a point where we need to provide employees, some employees or all employees, a large raise. The goal is to make sure that the job descriptions are up to date, accurately reflect the work required, and that the compensation plan is, is revamped to be fair and appropriate for the types of work that is done throughout the town. We do annually look at salaries of other communities, and we and we have, we do try to make sure that we are competitive without being, paying to the high end or to the low end. We want to be fair and equitable to our employees. And in our case, we have unions that cover our police, fire, public works, and clerical employees. The goal here is to get this study done and a new system built that we can maintain, as the last one wasn't done in the past, so that when we go into negotiations with employees, we have a sound plan that we can negotiate from and make sure that what we're negotiating with our employees is fair to our taxpayers and fair to our employees. If we are, if we do find that there are some employees who are not being compensated competitively, we will need to figure out a strategy by which, over some period of time, we can adjust that. I can't, I can't, as I sit here today, know what that would look like or how much that would cost. But given that the town regularly adjusts its pay plan for its clerical and non-union employees anyway, I'm going to make the assumption that we are competitive in our salaries, and this will help us validate that.
Before, can I get your name again for the town clerk?
Yeah, Tom Balone.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
You have a follow-up question?
Yeah, the only reason that I'm asking this question is because when you see compensation plan review, compensation being the key word, I'm sorry, I have to, I'm learning, it's the first time here, so you'll have to, I apologize.
Welcome to the meeting.
You're welcome. So, but the bottom line is, when you see compensation plan review, there's only one thing that your mind can jump to, and compensation plan review could potentially increase the salaries of this town, I would assume. Is that correct?
Well, it could reduce them too, but there's a Spring, there's a Springtown meeting where the whole bunch of line items for salary, and I hope you come and
I'll be there.
And I hope you take part in the Advisory Committee. You'll have a series of meetings coming in the spring. Please attend. The Board of Selectmen meets pretty frequently. They'd love to have more visitors. Please take part. Please ask questions.
I will. You can be sure of it. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Any further questions? Ms. Klesby.
Nicole Klesby, 8 Wampanoag. As I read this, the $22,000 is just to complete the review. Anything that would be implemented, and I'm not talking salaries or anything like that, job descriptions, that sort of thing. Anything that would be implemented would therefore be an additional cost to the $22,000? Is that correct?
I don't know what the scope is here. If anyone wants to talk to scope, Ms. Robinson?
I can take it from there, Mr. Moderator. So the scope will include a review and update of job descriptions for all the jobs, the actual compensation, the actual classification plan, the salary survey, and then training for our staff to make sure that we can manage this system and keep it up to date with any jobs that change or new jobs that are created in future years. So it continues to be a living plan. As to how much it will cost to implement in terms of negotiations with our union or salary changes to any, non-union personnel would be a subject of town meeting, as the moderator has explained. But there are no costs beyond the $22,000 that we expect.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Sir?
At 138 Red Maple Run. I guess in reading the warrant article, this hasn't been updated since 2002. So I guess I need to, I'd like to understand the urgency of why it suddenly has to be done now, and how does this affect union contracts? Are contracts written where if the, if the compensation plan changes, they will automatically be affected? So I guess there's a two-part question, sorry.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. It's an excellent question. This is, this project is a high priority for me as a new town administrator because in 17 years, the way we work has changed, and job descriptions have not necessarily kept up with it. I can't speak to why, in the first, say, 10 years after the plan was implemented, it wasn't kept up to date, and I'm sorry for that. But I think it's important to do so, and again, not because my goal is that we pay, we don't want to pay more than our competitor towns, and we don't want to pay less because we want to keep good employees. It's also a priority for me to do this, start this work now because one of our unions, who actually is very much supportive of this work, our clerical union, their contract ends in, current contract is up in June 30th of 2021. I would like to have this study done so that the town has a solid basis for those negotiations before those negotiations start. Because they would generally start about a year from now. And so if this study takes six or seven months to complete, then we'll be in a good position to then sit down with them and have a fruitful negotiation.
So I guess, Mr., the second part of my question, Mr. Moderator, was about the union contracts. You know, Ms. Robinson mentioned one union contract. What about the police, fire? I would assume that most of town employees are under some union contract, and they're probably all different.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. The police and fire contracts were just recently resolved earlier this spring for the next three years. The clerical union contract and the DPW contract both expired June 30th of 2021.
So that's the first one that would be affected by it. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Richard Fine, Wentz Berry Way. I'd like to know how this is going to improve the quality of the services that the town is providing to us other than first responders.
Ms. Robinson?
I'm not sure I can, through you, Mr. Moderator, I'm not sure I can draw a narrow connection between an updated job description and actual services provided other than to be sure that employees are working to the job descriptions that they have and providing good services through that.
I think that's a perfectly fine answer. Sir, you have a question, comment?
Yes. Who will decide which towns are used to compare to the town of Norfolk? And after the classification, reclassification has been determined, who will share in the result?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. We will go out and, once, if the money is approved, we'll go out and seek proposals from firms who do this sort of work. And when we select a firm, we will work with them to determine who are the appropriate, which towns are the appropriate comparisons for us. Generally, when these plans are done, you look at a variety of factors. You look at population, you look at tax base, you look at towns that are geographically nearby to us and might be competitor towns to us for employees, and you factor those all in. And we would probably pick somewhere between 15 and 20 different towns so that we can have a fair overview of that. And if you could, through the moderator, remind me of your second question.
The second question was, what, with whom will the result of that reclassification be shared?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. They would be shared with the Selectmen, and it would be a public document for anyone who wanted to review it.
Thank you. Seeing, last, last one at the mic.
Tony Centori, 118 Gray Birch Road. I would think that in this plan, compensation and review of salaries and job descriptions, you might want to look at the mission statement of each department. What do they need to do? And then flesh it out with people, and then talk about the job description and the compensation. You're just kind of moving stuff around, and I don't see how you're going to come up with anything that's less. You're going to come up with more. More money is going to get spent.
Thank you, sir. Seeing no further questions or comments, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, it passes by a majority. Article 16, a borrowing article for capital items. Mr. Fruntak.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town borrow the sum of $430,000 to fund the capital expenditures as printed in the warrant and displayed on the screen.
Mr. Fruntak.
So our capital articles today come in two flavors, debt-funded and cash-funded. This is the debt-funded listing. The town administrator presented these items. Yeah, it's on. Hello? This is the, okay, there we go. Go back to the beginning. The, we have two articles tonight for capital items, debt-funded and cash-funded. This is the debt-funded portion. The items on the screen were presented to the Advisory Board by the town administrator. The highlights are a much-needed truck and roadway paving and repairs. After discussion, we all felt that these were important, and the article was unanimously approved by the Advisory Board. Thank you.
Any further questions, comments on Article 16? Ma'am? Question?
Marguerite Kowalkian, Burkner, Wampanoag. Could I ask the question of the pavement program? What's inclusive of that in terms of the roads?
Sure. Can anyone answer? Mr. McGee?
Bob McGee, Director of Public Works. I could answer that. Oh, there are some of the streets posted there right now. But I have a, our Assistant Director is a pavement management expert. And if I could, Barry, I'd like you to come up. He can speak to the roads program this year. He's put together quite a program and a list of streets that we're going to be looking forward to paving.
So good evening, Barry LaRiva, Assistant DPW Director. So the paving program that we're looking at for this year has some carryover roads from our Chapter 90 funding for this year. We had a late start in the season. Our contractor wasn't working with us, so we're going to carry over, excuse me, Medway Branch, North Street, a portion of Union Street and Ash Road. We have several projects slated for our Chapter 90 money to be used for next year. And the extra $100,000 that we're looking at, we want to incorporate Boardman Street, Tucker Road, and Marshall Street. So our idea is, is what we like to do is use the Chapter 90 funding for more main roadways, excuse me, secondary and more residential roadways, and use the town-funded money for main thoroughfares that everybody's going to access. We have a lot of roads to go through. We have a lot of roads in disrepair, so coming up with an accurate list is difficult. We took a shot at looking at usage, proximity to schools, a lot of the complaints that we get on a daily basis, and put this active list together for tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you. Do you have any projection as to how this borrowing will affect the tax rate?
Anyone have the numbers on that?
We haven't started calculating the budget for FY '21 yet, but I would generally answer, Mr. Moderator, that our goal was to ensure that we did not increase the amount of inside-the-levee borrowing from prior years. We tried to keep it even so that the tax rate wouldn't be adversely impacted.
Does that mean there's some borrowing coming off, and this is taking its place?
That is correct, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Sir, question, comment?
Sure, I have a question. Jeff Burkner, I have a question about Lake Street paving. Are we paving Lake Street so we don't have to maintain it every year? Or is this just the annual Band-Aid?
Barry?
Yes, the monies we are looking forward to are to finish pave and do everything we need to finish on Lake Street, so it'll be done.
Thank you.
So we may not have to hear about Lake Street at a future town meeting, at least for a little while?
That is, the plan is, I don't want to hear about it ever again, all right?
Sir?
Yeah, Richard Fine, Wentz Berry Way. We've been here about 12 years now, and I've seen absolutely no action on repairing or repaving from the Millis Line, past Vair, up to the High Tension Wires. Where is that on this budget? And should we be borrowing more to make sure that that roadway, which is high use, is done?
The issue with 115, it's a very large project. Personally, we're looking at it internally as a possible project for the future, maybe a tip-funded project. Within the couple of years, we're looking at maybe doing a mill and overlay on it to get us through the process so we can get to a tip-funded project. I'd like to see the roadway look just like the rest of 115, basically going from 1A all the way to the Millis Town Line.
Okay, well, I would just settle for the part that affects us.
I'm sure you would.
And frankly
Quite neighborly of you.
Yeah, isn't that nice? Well, it's all about me anyways. But anyways, it's, personally, that piece of roadway has now cost us personally $850 because of inadequate repairs and pavement. We had two, we had two bent rims, and we had to replace a tire. And I hope to God that when you do buy that other sign, that you will put that sign up and say, "Bad roadway", because there were never any signs posted.
So the issue we have with 115 is, just looking at that project at a whole, it's a very expensive project. I get, we get roughly $400,000 through our Chapter 90, which doesn't get us far. We're getting an extra $100,000 this year, which we'll incorporate into the program. That road alone, just to do that, is about $80,000 to $90,000. So it's a balancing act to spend the funds we have to be able to allocate throughout the community.
Where is the, you know, before we
Can we just, let's, I don't want to get too much in the back and forth. So let's, if we could have maybe one more question, and then we'll move on.
Okay, one question here is, before we came into the town, I understand there was an override for paving, which was mandatory use for one year. And then that money went into the general fund. Why aren't we peeling that money back and putting it into this to do a better job on the roads?
That was before my time here. Can't answer that one.
That's a good dodge there. Ms. Ruby Russell. Come on up.
I was nervous about coming up here, but I'm going to ask my question anyway. I live at 143 North Street. We moved here to get out of the city. We live on a street, on North Street, where if you're trying to go for a walk and a car is coming towards you, you can't jump off the side of the road because there's poison ivy. So I want to know, one, I don't expect, this is road repair. Are we ever going to get a sidewalk? And the other question is, what can be done to help sightlines so that you can actually walk down the street without fear of getting run over?
So a little beyond the scope of what we have here, Pamela?
I know, but I wanted to take the opportunity to ask.
So again, I'm going to, Barry's over here, Bob's there. I'm sure there'll be, right, bright-eyed, bushy-tailed in their offices tomorrow.
But that does fit in in road repair because when it's icy and cars can't see you, it's dangerous.
So where might North Street be on your list?
So as for road repair, it's not on our list right now.
So how do we get it on the list?
Hold on. We are implementing this winter. We're implementing a roadside clearing program, so we're going to start picking our major roadways and start moving back the brush in the edge of roadways. As for sidewalks, we recently had a complete street study done that identified priority roadways in town that we'll be looking at sidewalks in the future.
All right. The reason I mention it is because people travel down there. It's a straight, it's a straightaway, and then going up the hill or coming down the hill in a straightaway. So people don't slow down, no matter how many signs you put out there or light things or whatever they are.
Thank you. Sir?
Thank you.
Larry Clark, Secong Street. I just have a question on Secong Street. I think anyone who's traveled that has seen the work that's being done by the gas company. And I understand, it's my understanding that the gas company has allocated some funds to repave that road. My question is, is that going to be sufficient funds to bring that road back to, it's one of the few roads that was half-decent in this town, and now it's probably going to be one of the worst roads. And I don't know if those funds that were allocated were just to pave the one side that they dug up, or is it going to be curb, you know, side to side that will be paved? Or, you know, is any of that cost going to come upon the taxpayers? Or will the gas company foot the bill for the entire, to put the road back the way it was before they tore it up? Thank you.
So again, trying to stay within focus of what we're voting on. Where does Secong Street fit in with your kind of road plan, given all this work that's being done?
Great question, and it's glad that I can get it out there, that the gas company ran into problems, as everybody knows, in the North Shore. And they started this project. They made it from Campbell Street to wherever they have stopped right now. They were ordered to stop. And they did a clean job right up till now. The permanent patch that's in place, they're responsible for. And we have $150,000 bond to hold them to a good pavement, and that's good up until a year after the job's complete. We also calculated a full reclamation of that street, the better part of a mile, if not a mile, right around 5,000 feet. And we now have in the bank over $300,000 of Columbia Gas money to restore that street when the time does come.
Maybe my figures are off. My research has said it's about $1 million a mile to do two lanes. I could be wrong, but that's what I, my research has found. So, it appears that the gas company has kind of short-changed the town as far as giving the town enough money to put that road back to the way it was before they came along.
Mr. McGee? Quickly, briefly.
I don't want to tell you how old I am, but I've been doing this quite a while. And I'm telling you, we're going to have enough money for a party after that's done. Because I over-calculated it, but your $1 million a mile is probably, if good, when you're talking about infrastructure, possible water, maybe traffic lights, wheelchair ramps at every intersection, curbed granite corners and so forth. But the figures that I have, I'm promising you, is going to be able to get that road refurbished.
And that's both sides, not just the side they tore up?
That's both sides. What's going to happen now is, they've gone up with a trench that you can see on the travel line heading towards Millis. As time goes on and people know that there's gas outside, there's going to be what you would call laterals. They're going to tap that main, and they're going to go to the houses on each side of the street. So, it's going to get a little bit more ugly before it gets repaired, but the patchwork that they're doing, we even got money for inspections. So, we're out there with them, making sure that the ride is smooth. It may be a little unsightly because of the discolor and the inconvenience that they're working out there, but it's probably going to be three to five years before we, you know, do a curb-to-curb overlay, unless it falls apart sooner than that.
Thank you.
You bet.
Mr. Rayo?
Thank you, Moderator. Al Rayo, 91 Red Maple Run. So, I have a question regarding the $190,000 investment for the roll-off truck. I'm assuming that the town doesn't have one. Is that replacing a piece of equipment that we already have, or is this a new piece of equipment that we don't have?
Mr. McGee?
Barry, can you come up just for a minute? He's got all the stats for you. But we have, we do have a roll-off truck right now, and it, the truck right now, I think it's a 2005, and that's what I want him to verify, so it's pushing 15, 20 years old. A truck like that, it's a diesel engine, can often get up to 500,000 miles. This truck here, even more. But this truck here has 350,000 hard miles on it. The thing about this truck is, it's all about weight. So, when that truck goes out, we go to Auburn, we go to another town, what's, I forget, we go to Charles Town. We make long runs, sometimes three, today we did three runs. And what we do is, when we load that truck up, we make sure that the containers are maxed full. So, we don't have to make three trips. We make one trip. So, we invest it in compacting machines so that when we go to market, we go with full weight. So, the truck does haul a lot of weight. Right now, I think if you go to the garage, you're going to see that there's a pin underneath the engine because it's just leaking oil. And although we could put money into it, it would be significant. One of the things, one of the good parts of this that I'd like to mention, that you can't see up there, that it, well, it's not up there now, but the truck is estimated conservatively. The truck could possibly be purchased, when we go and we really bear down on the specifications, down to approximately 185,000. The truck itself, if we treat it well and we get the money tonight, which is voted on, probably won't show up here till the spring sometime, or even the summer. And that truck that we do have, we'll get some, have some trade-in value, and possibly up to $20,000. But without this truck, and we'd have to go out to rent a truck to come in, and we'll never, wouldn't be able to run the business like we're doing now at the transfer station. So, we go out three times, three times a day, three times a week. We point on quite a bit of miles. We deliver roll-off containers to houses, to people that are doing demo on their house. It services a lot of people, a lot of things, a lot of people don't need, don't understand. And it also, it shuffles around the cans on site. It's a really multiple-use truck, and without that, the transfer station business might just shut down.
Thank you. I was informed, and I'm happy to see that we're putting that. We would be using this truck in a very constructive manner, if you answered my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Al.
Mr. Moderator, I might interject for a quick moment.
You may, Mr. Calcutta.
Thank you. The level of engagement that Mr. McGee has displayed just now is really reflective of his commitment to putting forth a quality product here in town, while being readily accessible to residents and nosy first-time selectmen alike. Next month, Bob will be retiring from his post, and I would like to ask that the community join me in thanking him for his service and wishing him well in his retirement.
Sir, question?
Just one question, please. If a drop-off truck goes 500,000 miles, and we have 350,000 miles on our current truck, which leaves 150,000 miles, I thought it would be like 25,000 miles a year, which equates to another six years that this truck could be on the road based upon the 500,000-mile figure that I heard. Consequently, if there's another 150,000 miles left on this truck, and some maintenance is required, wouldn't it be logical to spend the money on the maintenance and save the 190,000 if we've got six more good years on that truck?
I think those are good points. I think the last commentary by Mr. McGee probably, I think, responded to most of that, given the heavy usage and the need to have a new truck that can do all the services that he mentioned. I don't think we have to repeat that. If Barry or Bob has anything additional beyond what I just heard in that lengthy response to Mr. Rayo, fine. Otherwise, we could stand on that. Bob, briefly, if anything? I don't think we have to go in depth, but if you have anything to add.
You know, I'm not a mechanic. I'm doing the best I can to convince you, because I worked for you. I wouldn't want to buy a new truck if we didn't, if we didn't need it. But like I said as I was parting, without that truck, we're really out of business. And the truck could possibly go another year, or two, but if it doesn't, we need to rely on other rental places to come in and pay the rental fees and stuff like that. Right now, the truck also has a shim in it, so when it goes down the highway underweight, it's a little bit all, a little, not all over the road, but it has a shim in it. And typically, that truck and that engine needs about, at about $350,000, needs a transmission, which goes another $16,000. But I just didn't want to bother, bore you with all the things that are wrong with that truck. The interior is, I mean, you've got to open the door and take a look into it. But maybe we just had some bad luck with that truck, but it's time to replace it now. We've been asking for this for the last three to five years in our capital. So, if we can get it this year, I would, I think it'd be a smart buy.
Thank you, Bob. This requires a two-thirds vote for passage due to the fact that it's borrowing. All those in favor say aye? All those opposed say no? It passes by the required two-thirds, I declare. Article 17, capital for, without borrowing.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town, that the town transfer the sum of $251,116 to fund the capital expenditures displayed on the screen and provided in the handout.
There's a list of them right there. Mr. Frontac?
So, these are the remaining capital items for the evening. Again, the town administrator and some of the department heads presented this to the advisory board. It was unanimously approved. Highlights include a police cruiser, really essential police and fire communication gear. Really, all the items here are urgently needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frontac. Any questions, comments on Article 17? Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes, can somebody please elaborate on other sources that seems somewhat open to what the other sources are?
I think the sources are all listed right there.
Oh.
Are you referring to the motion?
I guess I withdraw my question.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg. Seeing no one else at the mic, this requires a simple majority. All those in favor say aye? All those opposed, no? It passes by a majority. Article 18, a new revolving fund. Ms. Klein?
I move that the town establish a council on aging revolving fund to be expended under the direction of the Council on Aging Director for provisions of senior programs for which receipts credited to the fund include participate, participant fees with an expenditure limit of $6,000, and to amend the general bylaws of the town. Article 2, Section 7.5 accordingly, to insert a new row in the table after planning board for advertising.
Ms. Klein, explanation on this?
This article is a request to authorize the Council on Aging to set up a revolving fund to deposit fees for programs that they offer. The fees will go into the fund, which will then be used to pay for the costs of the program. Up till now, the fees charged went into the general fund, in which the COA could not pay for programs. The program costs have been paid from other sources.
So, these types of funds, we have a list of them in our general bylaws. They allow departments to bring money in and spend it without having to go back to town meeting each and every time. This is just our newest revolving fund. Any questions or comments on this article? Seeing nobody at the mic, it requires a simple majority. All those in favor say aye? All those opposed, no? It passes unanimously. Article 19, OPEB liability trust fund. Mr. Lutz?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town accept Section 20 of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 32B, as amended, and transfer $25,000 from free cash to the other Post Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund.
Mr. Lutz?
Mr. Moderator, the advisory committee voted to support this article in order to begin addressing the significant liability that the town currently owes its current and future retirees for health care costs. Some members felt strongly that the proposed amount was insignificant, and that a more comprehensive plan should be put in place. However, members generally believe that a first commitment must be made to begin addressing this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Lutz. Any questions or comments on this article? Sir? Take your time.
Howard Ram 101, Red Maple Run. How much exactly is the sum of money that's in arrears for the benefits and payments?
I don't think you want to know, but...
Actually, I do know, but I think these people deserve to know as well.
With the current valuation we've just received, it, the number is $26,373,326.
That's million with an M.
That is correct, sir.
How did we get into that position?
The town, Mr. Moderator?
This had to be over years that we didn't upkeep the benefits for...
Anecdotally, I represent a lot of cities and towns, and I can't think of a town that's up to date on these, but I'll, so it's fighting uphill.
So, hopefully, a short overview, Mr. Moderator. The town accepted the section of the state law that provides for retiree health insurance for employees in 1967. I think that's much earlier than many towns did. And what that allows is for a school or town employee that retires from service and is eligible for a pension, is eligible for retiree health insurance. Up until the last, in the last 10 years, would you say, Mr. Moderator, it wasn't even required to be determined to be a liability. It wasn't calculated. There was no actuarial studies done. That has changed, and now communities must perform this study every year, I believe, to determine what its actuarial responsibility is. But most communities had not ever begun to fund it.
Well, the truth of the matter is, I live in Norfolk. I don't care about the other cities. You're $26 million in arrears. We have a net income in this town of, what, about 30-something million? How are we going to pay $26 million in arrears to these people without raising our taxes again?
So, through you, Mr. Moderator, that's part of the reason we're asking for approval for this tonight.
Well, that's $25,000.
If we can let her finish?
I'm sorry.
So, currently, the town has 134 retirees that we provide benefits to today. When one employee retires and is eligible for the benefit, and a new employee is retired, is hired to take their place, that's where the liability starts to grow over time. And there's several ways that we need to start to attack it. One is to start putting money into a fund so it can be invested, and it can start to grow. And hopefully, each year in the budget, we can become diligent about adding to it so that it can start to, over time, address the liability. There, it would be ideal if there was legislation at the state level that changed the benefit for perhaps future retirees, so it's not as significant for taxpayers as it is today. That legis, there hasn't been any legislation in recent years, but that's a way to address it as well. And then internally, we need to continue to look at the health plans that we offer employees and try and find more cost-effective ways to provide them with insurance so that, over time, the cost to our taxpayers is less. But as the moderator pointed out, it's a liability that a lot of communities are in, and we need to take steps to start.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments or questions, requires a simple majority. All those in favor say aye? All those opposed, no? It passes with a majority. Article 20, water capital improvements. Mr. Hurwitz?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer $270,000 from Water Enterprise Fund retained earnings for the installation of a water main to the Holbrook Street well field.
Mr. Hurwitz?
The advisory committee recommends approval of Article 20. This capital funding is necessary to install a water main to bring the new Holbrook Street well online. This expenditure is a requirement in order to operationalize the well and ensure a return on this project's previous funding through town meeting.
Questions, comments? Sir?
I know I've spent a lot of time here. The question I have is, how is that going to affect our aqua far over at the Village of Rivers Edge, which we have invested a lot of money into? Because that's our water supply, and it's building it right next to it, pretty much. Second of all, and this is sort of like adjacent to that question, is all I see is moving it from free money into all of these accounts. Free money is like just a never-ending fund of money that you can use any way you want to. Why wasn't all of this stuff thought about prior to the year starting, and not having to grab out of this giant bundle of money?
So, this isn't from that bundle of money? This is from the Water Enterprise Fund retained earning, which is dedicated to water-related projects?
This is just an adjacent question, because all I saw is free fund.
Let's stick to this one.
So, this basically is, how does it affect our aqua far, which is on Holbrook?
So, this well, I mean, that might be a discussion from, this is about the main that's going to the well, but Mr. McGee's behind you. Maybe he could help shed some light on that.
So, the, again, what you just said, this $270,000 has nothing to do with the well. It's just, it's distribution. It just gets the well into our system so that we can provide the town with a third well supply of water. The well that we're talking about at Holbrook Street is very close to where you're at. My understanding of the well that you're at, it's a deep well that it may be, if you could see underground, it's like in a canyon-type form, and you have quite a supply of water there. However, the well that we have at Holbrook Street is just shallow. It's almost like a seasonal well. It isn't, it's a supplemental well. It's not one that we're going to depend on to supply the town with water. We have a permitted amount that, if we had 15 wells, we still can't pump more than the permitted amount that the DEP has allowed us. So, this is just a well that is going to supplement the two wells that we have and allow them to rest. So, it's going to be what they call optimizing. So, this will go on to let one other one sleep, let the waters recharge naturally, instead of continuously drawing from two well sites. But I think it should have no effect on, and I think the Charles River, which is the supply for these sites, well sites, is right there anyway, so...
So, it wouldn't have any effect on ours?
None that I, no. No.
Just a quick question. Nezales, 7 Norwell Street. So, even though we're going to put this well online, we're still going to have water issues during the summer, I'm assuming. This is a quick question.
Right. That's a little, that's water conservation that's mandated by DEP. I don't know if anyone else has anything to add. That's unrelated to your supply of potable water. So, sir, you have a question?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I just want to make sure I understand what's written here.
I just want to make sure I understand what's written here. This project was previously approved at town meeting, the funding through town meeting in the warrant. So do I understand that the town brought before town meeting a request for funding to build the well, but didn't ask how to turn it on?
I can't answer that question. We were bringing the well online. Now we're bringing water from the well or through a main.
So we're playing a shell game with the money with the town?
So we don't have to characterize it in that way, but if Mr. McGee wants to explain the sequencing of events here, that's fine.
First of all, we did-- we're hoping that we never have to spend this money. This is an enterprise account. When the money isn't spent, it goes right back into that. It's supported by the, let's say, the members of the water--
I know what an enterprise is.
Well, they need to know. It's not taxpayers' dollars. It's just the water users. And if we don't have-- if there's-- when we go out to bid and we put that well on online and we make the pump station, there may just be enough money that we never have to spend this. But this is, like you said, why have a well site if we can't get it into the system? There was a lot to win into the figures of-- and study and how much it would cost to put this online. So this, again, is just for distribution.
I just wanted to explain. All I'm trying to do is bring a point that, as taxpayers, we want to understand completely when we approve projects. We want to understand the full scope of the project.
I think that that's fine. I think we can avoid, though, characterizing in a kind of a pejorative sense, though, in the future. Let's try that. Sir?
Mr. Moderator, John Newhivian, 3 Knoll Drive. My question is, do we have an estimate? Is this the last step? Do we have an estimate as to when the well is actually going to be online?
Bob, you have an estimate?
We just went to a long permitting period, which is common for going online with the DEP. I expect that this time next year, we'll be able to get a drink of water from this well site.
Excellent. Thank you.
Seeing-- Question?
I'm curious as to the route that this water line will take, and if this $270,000 includes repaving the road that's going to be dug up to install this water line.
Yes. I'm seeing a nodding of the head there. For-- I don't know about the route, but it is covering the pavement. Thank you. Seeing no one else at the mic, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It passes unanimously. Article 21, there's no motion under Article 21. It is an opportunity for boards and committees to provide updates or reports as they see fit. We've got four reports today. We're going to start with the Norfolk Energy Committee, Mr. Bakanowski.
Thanks. I saw it at the end there, so I was kind of--
If you could just speak into that mic, just so people can hear you.
Andy Bakanowski, Chairman of the Energy Committee, live on Nogentuck Avenue. I'm going to blast through eight slides really quick, primarily focusing on the savings that we'll see upon implementation of the-- or actually, once we start getting funds through the Green Communities Act. Last year at this time, we requested $15,000 to do a facility audit for all the town buildings. We came in about $2,000 under budget, which is good. The savings were measured, monitored, and the strategy that was developed as part of that report was then sent to Massachusetts Municipal Association, MAPC, Metropolitan, sorry, Area Planning Commission, sorry. They prepared an application for the Green Communities Act at no cost to the town, and the application was submitted four days ago. Next slide. So background, the townwide energy audit was basically finished last year, reviewed this year. We did have a few months' delay because funding of the application preparation was delayed by a few months. Couple of acronyms that you're going to hear a lot about, hopefully in the next couple of years, is ECMs, Energy Conservation Measures. And this is something that's critical to understand, that some of these are long-term, short-term, but the bottom line is, there's a return on all of them. This audit that was done supports the Green Communities application. Like I said, it was submitted last week. Next. So we looked at all the buildings, looked at all the energy usage, reviewed all the energy utility bills, electric, gasoline, propane, diesel, natural gas, fuel oil. It's this report actually prepares a number that simply is sort of like a miles per gallon. It's actually a million BTU units. It normalizes everything from electricity to gas, natural gas, diesel, fuel oil, to a single number. Next one. So combined for the 250,000 square feet of town buildings, we came up with a value that we used 25,057 million BTUs over the course of a year for our baseline study. Our goal is to reduce that to-- reduce that 25,000 by 5,600 million BTU. This goal does not include gasoline or diesel reduction, partly because we have a lot of exempt vehicles here. But if you watch the last selectmen's meeting where we gave a presentation to the selectmen, the push for hybrid vehicles will only help us in the long run. So the single largest source of savings is expected to be electrical use. We hope to save 769,000 kilowatt hours. That will basically equate to-- sorry, my math here. That will equate to about 2,600 million BTUs that will be able to reduce. The remaining other areas of savings in heating, oil, and natural gas, propane, will be about 2,900 million BTU. Next slide. So how much will we be saving? If you take an average over the next five years, if all the-- if we could implement everything today, which isn't going to happen because it's a five-year process, we would, in theory, save $172,000 a year. But that won't happen. But we will see savings every year that we implement these projects. Next one. So how much is it going to cost? Based on the study we did, we have it projected at $572,000, which equates to about $114,000 a year if you were to look at that over an average period. Rebates from utilities are going to be heavily pursued and other known incentives. There are other programs that come and go through the Division of Energy Resources, and sometimes projects that we can be doing, we can be getting some adders on. So that's a positive thing. Some of these projects will be done as capital projects. The unexpected projects, such as a heating system, large heating system that fails, while some of that work is actually included in our plan, some of it may be outside the cycle that we're anticipating. So this might be-- that might be a touchy area, but we still will be able to get rebates, and any green communities money we have, we can apply towards that. Next one. So number one goal is to minimize the impacts to the taxpayer. And this is kind of where we get into a little bit of the, I'll call it the heady stuff. Some of this stuff, we just don't have exact numbers on, but it will pay off as the program keeps going. We're going aggressively pursue rebates. Like I said, that's going to be the critical thing. Everybody keeps saying in this field, the energy field, that we'll be losing energy or utility rebates over the next couple of years. I tend to agree with that because I work with the utilities quite a bit on other projects, and we are seeing them slowly disappear. But so far, so good. Green community funding, the first designation grant's $140,000. After that, we can apply for up to $250,000. That $140,000, when we do get it, we actually earmark that for the HL of Day School, and we're seeing if that's-- can have a little bit left over from there, and we'll be able to address some other lighting projects. There's other grant programs. The MVP program, which is Municipal Vulnerability Program, which actually looks at resilience and climate change. There is overlap, so that could be another possible funding source. A lot of that deals actually with the DPW, because, Bob, I know you guys submitted it with beta engineering, but there are some programs, and there's some aspects of that that we can go after. How am I for time?
You're okay?
Good. Okay. I'll slow down now.
Don't-- no, don't do that.
So we're going-- the normal bidding with municipal projects is either done by Chapter 149, which is vertical construction; Chapter 30 is horizontal construction; the water pipe would actually be Chapter 30. We have to start understanding how we bid under Chapter 25A. This is a program that actually looks exclusively at energy projects where the bond is structured to be paid back over a specific time, and what they do is that payback schedule is structured on what your savings are. So if you save $50,000 a year, you pay back $50,000 a year. Yes, there's interest, but the nice thing about it is that the bond is set up such that when the job reaches 95 substantial completion, or 95% substantial completion, that's when your clock starts for one year. So you have a one-year grace period, so you can acquire all those savings, have all those savings in your pocket, to then start paying off a year later. So that's a benefit. I've done half a dozen projects like that, totaling about $60 million, and it works so far. So the other thing that we need to do as a town, we need to figure out what are we going to do with funds that we do save? How do we deal with that? Does this just get rolled back, or we just start reducing our operating budget? Or do we sort of keep anticipating that's going to be there and use that money to build up a nest egg to do other projects? So this is something that we'll have to be talking about in the future, not necessarily related to the Green Communities designation, but it's a-- I think it's a good problem to have. Next. So this is a real-life example we have, working with Matt, who's over here. We have a proposal for a lighting project at the senior center. The actual cost to replace all the lighting from fluorescent and other types of higher energy use is $23,948.91. That's the project in its entirety. The ever-source rebate for this project is $16,000. Where this deviates actually from our plan, if you were to look at Table 4, which you can actually find on the Selectmen's page, and we're going to actually get the plan put up onto the energy page as well. We had an estimate originally $8,000. There's incentives that the utility companies are providing right now because it's towards the end of the year, and they want to make their quota. So we're getting a little bit more money. After everything is said and done, leaves the $7,100. Speaking with Matt earlier, he's going to go on-- he's going to do what's called on-bill repayment for a 24-month period, 0% interest. And when you look at the numbers, it actually will have a cash positive situation per month because the amount that's actually due per month to pay off that $7,100 is actually going to be less than the savings are. So that's the perfect situation to be in. I can assure you, that's not the case in all cases in some of the projects I've done when you get into the multimillion-dollar projects, which I don't expect we're going to do, but that's something that we could be looking at. So straight payback is 1.2 years with an annual savings of a little over $5,000. So that's it. So stay tuned.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
Well done. Government Study Committee? Mr. Smith.
Hi, Jonathan Smith, 26 Robin Road, Chair of the Government Study Committee. We've been active for the past year. We have openings right now, so get involved. We have-- our next meeting is December 4th, and what we hope to do is set up a public forum in January. We're hoping to do it at the town library if they have space available and time for us. And we're going to talk about, I think, some real topics that people are interested in: recall, term limits, duties and responsibilities of the town administrator, town elections, when they are, when we would have town meeting, and size of some boards and committees that we have in town right now. So it's a good time to get involved. We meet in the little room next to the Selectmen's office, and we hope that you get involved and come out, and perhaps if you get involved, you'll find out what really goes on in town, what we can do and what we can't do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Select Board.
Good evening. I apologize. I am 10 days removed from a torn ACL at the gym over there. There is an ongoing investigation into the school committee member that was on the court at the same time, so I'm not saying who that is, but you're on notice, sir. Since this board took office in May of this year, it has been a high priority of ours to ensure that residents had access to information and resources to get their questions addressed. Whether that be through the implementation of a public comment period, monthly office hours, or even the development of alternate communication lines such as Facebook and the website, it continues to be the focus of this Select Board. One area we have not been able to be as responsive or open, however, is related to the process and decisions that went into the development and construction of the police station and regional dispatch facility at 14 Sharon Avenue. We, like many residents, have concerns about why the project budget was exceeded and the impact that it had on our ability to appropriately address the deficiencies at our fire station. Tonight, we had targeted this meeting to share more of what we have learned over the last few months, but have identified that in doing so, we would be potentially damaging the town's position for future remediation action. At this time, I would like to introduce our Town Council, Peter Mello, to briefly speak about that risk.
Thank you, Kevin. I have to lean forward a bit. Well, first of all, let me say, my name is Peter Mello from Murphy, Hesse, Tumi, and Lahane. I started serving in this Rolles Town Council a couple of months back, and this is my first town meeting, and I just want to say at the outset that it's my profound privilege and honor to serve the town. So it's my solemn duty to protect the town's interests. It's a duty I take very seriously, and to that end, I've advised the board to be measured in its comments about this matter tonight, notwithstanding any personal preferences to the contrary. In my experience, including in handling numerous construction cases over the years, it's just not prudent to discuss publicly the particulars of pending legal matters, particularly where you have creative adversaries who will take great pains to try to use any public statements to their benefit. I can confirm, as Kevin noted a moment ago, that we've been retained to carefully vet this matter and advise the town as to its options and potential next steps, and we continue to engage in that process deliberately and in earnest. I noticed some folks knitting out in the crowd, and that's how legal analysis and strategy is appropriately completed. It's woven, and it's woven carefully and with a lot of thought and caution. So, you know, I totally respect and completely understand, and I think it speaks well of anyone who's curious out there in the public about these issues, and I think it's totally appropriate at the right time. We're just not there yet, but rest assured that we continue to engage in this process, like I said, deliberately and carefully. And, you know, to that end, I think it's not appropriate to really get into the particulars. And it's premature at this point, too, because we're still engaged in the process, and we're formulating the advice now, so. But, you know, I totally respect and understand the desire to engage in a more fulsome public review of this matter at the appropriate time, and hopefully, we'll be in a position to draw conclusions in the near term and go from there. So thank you.
Thank you, Peter. To reiterate, our board is committed to providing the community with as much information as possible about this project. As a passionate former volunteer said at one of our recent meetings, "You need to earn back the trust of the residents," which each of us on the Select Board wholeheartedly agrees with and is committed to achieving. We thank you for your understanding, that we have the taxpayers' best interests at heart, and as such, we need some more time to fully explore all of the options to close out this project. We're also committed to developing a process by which the future fire station project can be managed in a manner that our citizens can be confident about, so that we may complete this facility in a cost-effective manner that we can all be proud of. Thank you very much.
Historical Commission, Ms. Pine.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to make an announcement about an event that's going to happen next year that is noncontroversial, and I think everybody can agree that it's going to be a pretty good thing. And that is Norfolk is going to celebrate our 150th birthday as of February 23rd next year. And to celebrate, we're going to hold a party, and it's going to take place on May 9th at the King Philip Middle School. We're going to have a very nice, lovely dinner. We're going to have music from the KP Chamber Music Groups. We're going to have the art of Horace Hamlin, the entire collection, on display. And most importantly, and the most fun, is that we're going to have some very distinguished guests in the form of about a dozen time travelers. And these time travelers are people who are very distinguished former citizens of Norfolk, who are going to travel through time and come to our party to wish Norfolk a very happy birthday. I won't read off the entire list of all the time travelers, but-- I won't read off the entire list of all the time travelers, but some of them, one of them, well, I've got five of them that I just scribbled down here. H. Olive Day, we all know who H. Olive Day is. David Avery, who was one of the founders of Norfolk, he was kicked out of Rentham. Agnes Bristol, who was the founder of Stony Brook. And some other more recent citizens, Walter Holmes. And are all, we all admire and remember Frank Gross. Frank Gross is coming. However, he's not coming as a time traveler as Frank Gross. He's coming in an airplane. And he's going to play another person in Norfolk history. But I was very pleased when Frank heard about this party and said, "I want to come, I want to come." So, put it on your calendars. By next January, February, we're going to have a website where you can buy your tickets online through PayPal. You'll be able to access this website through the Town website. You just click on the Historical Commission Time Traveler's Birthday Party, and you can buy your tickets online. We'll be bringing you up to date on, through TV and social media, about when you can buy tickets. It's going to be a limit. The maximum we can fit into the cafeteria is 300 people. I don't know whether that's going to be too few or too many, but that's our limit. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pine. Article 22 Historic Preservation, Mr. Hurwitz.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the Town transfer from the Community Preservation Fund Historic Reserve $10,000 for the purpose of removing, repairing, resetting, and cleaning approximately 40 headstones in the Norfolk and Pondville cemeteries.
Mr. Hurwitz.
The Advisory Committee recommends approval of Article 22. This article allows the usage of CPC funds towards cleaning, repairing, and restoring headstones within the town's two cemeteries.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Seeing none requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no?
No.
It passes with a clear majority. Article 23 Historic Preservation, Mr. Hurwitz.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the Town transfer from the Community Preservation Fund Historic Reserve $500 to build and install a display case for historic items at Norfolk Town Hall.
Mr. Hurwitz.
The Advisory Committee recommends approval of Article 23. This article allows the usage of CPC funds towards a display case of historic town items and artifacts for display at Town Hall.
Thank you.
Elizabeth Whitney, 26 Valley Street, Pondville. And I'll be one of the time travelers that Betsy Fagard by the name of Jerusha Pond, who lived in our house. What brings me up is the display case. As a former teacher, we had to decorate display cases on a rotating basis. I have a lot of experience in that domain. And about three weeks ago, I received a call from a former resident of Norfolk. I had not heard of these people. And they wanted to donate a City Mills, a picture in a paperweight of City Mills. And this object had been the pride and joy of his mother, who was in her late, who is in her late 90s. And they have donated it to us. I know that we have many objects in our Historical Commission office that need to be put on display. I sense when this case, if this vote passes, is installed, I will probably be the first person to put together a showcase. With my pleasure, I strongly support the passage of this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whitney. Seeing no one else at the mic, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no? It passes unanimously. Article 24 Open Space Project for Recreation, Mr. Hurwitz.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the Town allocates from the Community Preservation Fund Open Space and Recreation Reserve $40,000 for a three-to-five-year weed control program to preserve Highland Lake and City Mills Pond.
Mr. Hurwitz.
The Advisory Committee recommends approval of Article 24. This article will allow the usage of CPC funds to provide continued funding for water chestnut weed control for Highland Lake and provide new such funding for City Mills Pond. This weed control is critically necessary for the preservation of this lake and pond. This article had one member abstain, who's in a butter of this property from the vote, and otherwise was unanimous.
Questions, comments? Sir, come on up.
Gary Doherty, 2 Old Populatic Road. I fully support this, and I was wondering if it would be possible to include Old Populatic, oh, sorry, Populatic Pond?
Well, legally, we couldn't tack it on to this article, but the Community Preservation Committee is always open to ideas that enhance open spaces for either recreation or just pure preservation. So, I would recommend getting in contact with them, and maybe we could put it on the warrant for the spring.
Will do. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Johnny Hoff, North Street. I'm just wondering if it's mechanical weed control or chemical? And also, who is, who would be running it?
Anyone can answer that from CPC or otherwise? Mr. McGee? I think we've done, I think we've done mechanical in the past, and I think it's very difficult.
We did. We did a mechanical extraction at Highland Lake Pond, and it's, it was very effective, but too costly. This is a chemical killing of the weeds. And I highly recommend it. It's, these chestnut weeds are just choking out our ponds. And you can see the results of a good project over at Highland Lake. But even after this, I would, I won't be here, but I would encourage that they continue to do this until those weeds are extinguished.
Cool. And then it's, so it's CPC, who is?
The Community Preservation Committee is one source of funding for preservation projects such as this, as well as historical and affordable housing as well.
Cool. Thank you.
You're welcome. Question. Mr. Rosenberg.
I'm curious about the potential polluting or toxic effects of these chemicals that are going to be used. Can anybody address the safety or the potential risk of somebody consuming water from, that was treated with these chemicals?
Barry, wearing another hat?
Yeah, I can help out with that one. I spent 16 years with the Bellingham Conservation Commission. We used all these chemicals in the lakes that we had in Bellingham to eradicate and maintain these leaves. It's going to be put in by a certified company with all certified sprayers. And the idea is that the chemicals would dissipate in the water and not cause any harm to any fish, wildlife, or what have you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else at the mic also requires a majority vote. All those in favor, oh, Ms. Ruby Russell?
Yes. Can we get a list of what the chemicals are? That was my father's business in Long Island, and it had the highest rate of breast cancer. So, if I was going to vote on something, I'd really like to know what the chemicals are and if a complete study's been done on whether they're harmful or not. Because we were told Roundup was great, and now we know it's not.
I think that's a well-said point. I doubt highly that anyone here has an ingredients list for these chemicals here tonight, though, Pamela.
I don't think we should vote on something unless we know what it is.
Okay, so...
Does anybody else agree?
Well, it's not, it's not a, if you have a motion to make or a motion to...
I'd like to make a motion that we postpone voting until the Town is informed as to what we are voting on and what the contents and the repercussions and the, how would I put it? What the side effects are.
Okay, so I will treat that as a motion to substitute the main motion with a motion for indefinite postponement. Is there a second? Okay, that in and of itself is debatable. Ms. Andre, did you have a comment here?
Cindy Andrade, I'm on Worcester Road, and I'm on the Community Preservation Committee. Bob, can you correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe this would go through Conservation Commission for approval before it was ever enacted. And through that process, Conservation would approve or deny of the actual treatment process. But we have to have the money available to go forward. So, if Conservation felt it was not appropriate use of chemicals, they would deny it. And that would be the mechanism for approval or denial of the actual treatment.
So, for the benefit of Town Meeting, the Conservation Commission sits on all matters affecting changes or alterations or doing any work in wetlands such as a pond. So, someone would have to file an application, and there would be a public hearing, and there'd be review at that, at that time, is I believe Ms. Andre's point. So, there'd be a second level of review where these things could be discussed. Anyone else just on the motion for indefinite postponement? Seeing none. To indefinitely postpone, it would be a majority vote. So, if you want to indefinitely postpone consideration of funding for this project, then you will vote yes. If you are in favor of this project, you would vote no, and we would return to the main motion. Is that clear? Does everyone understand what we're voting on? Okay. So, all those in favor of indefinite postponement say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
I would say that the noes have it. So, moving to the main motion. And I would say also that if this does pass, then there will be a Conservation Commission hearing, and that people should voice their concerns at that time. We have a longstanding Conservation Commission that does really good work. So, any further comments on the main motion? Seeing none requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no?
No.
It passes by a clear majority. Article 25, Another Open Space Recreation Project, Mr. Hurwitz.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the Town allocates from the Community Preservation Fund Open Space and Recreation Reserve $90,000 for the rehabilitation and restoration of three Norfolk ballfields as described in the warrant.
Mr. Hurwitz.
The Advisory Committee recommends approval of Article 25. This article will allow the usage of CPC funds to upgrade and rehabilitate the playing field surfaces at three baseball and softball fields. If approved, the work is expected to be concluded prior to the start of the baseball and softball seasons. If weather causes an unforeseen delay, arrangements have been made to utilize fields at Plainville's PAL facility to avoid any impact or delay to the softball season.
Thank you, Mr. Hurwitz. Any questions, comments?
I'd like to know why this isn't self-funding by the people who use the fields. Why are we spending $90,000 when many of us don't use them, don't have kids that use them, don't have grandchildren that use them? So, why isn't this a self-funded event?
Ms. Proto or Mr. Rigdon?
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, through you to the Town Meeting. My name is Will. I am the Chair of the Rec Commission here in town. So, the issue we have is that the money exceeds anything that we can self-fund. We chatted earlier about DPW and a lot of the work they need to do with the roads, water, so on and so forth, which often leaves us kind of behind with what needs to get done. And the fields have gotten to a point where they're, some of them are unsafe, and some of them, we need to kind of nip at the bud now to get the work done, so we don't have to do more restoration work in the future. All this is to say, we need to come up with things on our own and new funding sources to get these items done. So, what we've done here is gone to the Community Preservation Committee, who has graciously put this article forward for us today. As you know, CPC is money that's taken out of taxes already. There's a fund and a reserve that is used for items like this. And our goal is to take that work away from DPW. And I would also offer that we do put money back into the fields, people who pay them for them, use the fields. We are the, one of the only, if not the only, department in town that is not funded by money from the town beyond Ann's salary, who I don't think Ann's had a weekend off in years. So, we only have what little we get from the people who use the fields. So, in the work here, it just goes beyond that.
Thank you, Mr. Rigdon. Seeing, sir?
Just a question. What would you expect the, if this repair is done, what is the expected life, then, of these repaired fields? Is this a one-year deal that has to be done annually, or is it five years? What would you expect from the repair?
That's a very good question. So, DPW and Recreation are working toward having a maintenance plan that we will maintain fields. So, at, going forward, we, our hope is not to have three fields that need full restoration again at one given time. Fields do, especially the busiest fields, which these are, these three fields are our busiest fields that we use. They do need to be rebuilt at some point, and it's usually five or six years down the line. That's what our goal is. Recently, it's been three or four. And I, as Will said, and as Mr. McGee had said earlier, the past year's been difficult with DPW. They've been understaffed, and we've been behind. We do do a fair amount of work on our fields. These three fields need to be really restored for playability and safety purposes. There are other two fields that DPW are working on. We also outsource other work, so it's not like we're, this is the only work that we're doing. We do other work as well to keep up and maintain other fields. Altogether, these are three fields. Altogether, we have six baseball fields, three softball or three skin fields. We have six soccer fields. We have two other multipurpose fields. All those other fields, we do maintain. Going forward, we certainly don't want to have three fields, and we don't expect to have three fields at any given time that need restoration. We may need to have one field restored, but we'll get into a cycle where we can maintain and move forward. So, no field should have to be restored nearly as often as they, right, as they are right now.
So, I just didn't hear. What would you expect a life to be, whether it's three or one field? What's a life after restoration?
So, it would depend on the use of the field. So, it's not one blanket answer, but for the busiest fields, I would hope to have at least five years.
Thank you.
Hi, Abigail Fine, Standish Road. What's the approximate income brought in by the users of the field? Like, the people who pay to rent it, I guess, to use it?
All the fields?
Yeah, I guess.
It's a lot of fields.
Yeah. I'm just wondering if maybe that fee needs to go up so that the users are paying for it, or...
So, the users pay $30 per player per season. And that goes toward the, any type of fertilization that we do, or any type of outsourcing of, we do a lot of aeration to maintain fields. If you have 1,000 people on fields, there's a lot of maintenance that needs to be done, and that's what that goes toward. $30 per player per season is...
Is that pretty average?
It's not, it's actually probably on the higher side. Every town is funded differently, though. So, it's really not comparing apples to apples necessarily. Some towns don't have any fees, and some, some towns have higher fees.
Thank you. Sir?
Mr. Moderator, Aaron Hunt at 266 Main Street. I was hoping you might inform the attendees tonight what the purpose of the Community Preservation Fund is and what some appropriate uses of the funds might be.
So, pretty varied. So, Community Preservation Fund is a, it's a state statute, and it allows a surcharge on your taxes, and could be an amount ranging from zero essentially to 3%. And it goes into three different buckets for expenditures: affordable housing, historic preservation, which we've seen some of tonight, and then open space, which is broken into pure conservation and recreation, such as we're seeing with this article right here. And there's a Community Preservation Committee in each town. They receive recommendations, and they come up with recommendations of their own, and they bring them to Town Meeting for approval to spend out of that fund. So, that fund builds over time. They get resources in, and then this body gets to vote on what we're spending it on. Seeing no further questions on this, we will take a vote. It is a majority vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no?
No.
It passes by a clear... It passes by a clear majority. Article 26, a bylaw amendment. Ms. Bailey?
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 26 as printed in the warrant.
Explanation on this one?
Yes. The Advisory Committee recommends approval of Article 26 as brought by the Town Government Study Committee. Sections three and four of these bylaws were last updated in 1936 and refer to practices that are either no longer in use or common. For example, many bids are now electronic and are not practically kept quote-unquote "under lock and key" in Town Hall. Furthermore, Chapter 30B of the Uniform Procurement Act of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, which is referred to in Section 2 and was added in 1991, already covers bid procedures and so Section 3 is no longer necessary to cover it separately. Section 4 changes the minimum performance bond requirement, which currently states a number that also made sense in 1936, but should be increased for current reality as well as allows the Select Board to waive the requirement when practically necessary. Both these modifications are based on the typical amounts and practices of other Massachusetts towns as researched both by the Town Government Study Committee and confirmed by the Town Administrator.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Seeing none. Oh, here we go. Question?
Mr. Chairman, in Section 45, I'm confused by the wording, "The contract has been reviewed by the Town Council. Said review shall for, shall be expeditious and not unreasonably withheld." I guess my question is and concern is the word "review," I would have preferred to see the word "approved" in there. I don't understand how a review can be unreasonably withheld.
So, this language is existing, so this isn't being changed, but, Ms. Robinson?
You are correct, Mr. Moderator.
So...
So can you tell me then what the word "reviewed" means?
Mr. Moderator, I would, I would recommend that Todd Linmark, who acts as our Town Accountant and Finance Director, is the one to answer this question.
You've been volunteered, Todd.
Sure. So the bylaw was set up a long time ago, way before I was even here. It's sort of unfortunately something we have to adhere to because it is a requirement. And the contracts themselves, sent to my office, I do review them, send them back, you know, once I go through the review process, make sure that it covers majority of the items that we need to have as far as whether it's insurance or certain disclaimers or whatever provisions we need for the contract's purposes. If it gets extensive, I may have to engage Town Council on some contracts, but for most part, the basic contracts is pretty much just a review of the contract policies to make sure there's nothing that's extraneous or out of whack, as they say.
Let me take a stab at this too. Very often with these contracts, the accountant, there's, they have to sign off on it before you can essentially put it into play. It's not a policy-related review. It is just a required sign-off. And I think this, that language that, that you took some umbrage with is for the purpose that their review is a little bit more perfunctory and they're just supposed to get through that review from the accounting perspective and it's not intended to be a policy-related view as to contracts. That's just my, a rough guess.
We need to make sure that we have the money in order to have the services provided.
So a review is not intended to be an approval?
It's to review the contract to make sure that the contract terms, as long as the amounts of the contract are also available for, that has been appropriated as well.
Thank you. Behind you, there's another question?
I see in Section 3, we're striking that entire thing. I did have two questions on that. It says, "We're removing, 'No bids shall be received after the time limit advertised for openings.'" My question, number one, is, is that, is a time limit covered somewhere else so that we're not just simply getting rid of a time limit? And then, I don't really understand, "Any or all bids may reject, may be rejected." By taking that out, is there any negative consequences to the town?
Ms. Robinson?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. In, I believe it was 1989, the state passed what we call Chapter 30B or the Uniform Procurement Act for Goods and Services. That essentially has, supersedes the local procedures that we've had and we're required to follow those. And it covers all sorts of things that you've just brought up, such as timing of bids, rejecting of bids, reasons you can reject bids. So there are other sections of the law pertaining to other types of contracts, but generally towns are required to follow all of those. And so I would say, as, as the Advisory Committee did, this section is simply outdated and it's been replaced by language that we're required to follow anyway.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no further comments, also requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes unanimously. Article 27, general bylaw amendment. Mr. Huff?
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 27 as printed in the warrant.
Mr. Huff?
The Advisory Committee supports adding the amendment to improve efficiency to our town's governance. We feel that there are sufficient safeguards, such as approval processes with change management controls, to ensure that allowing the town clerk to adjust the general bylaws as described in the article will not create any unintended changes.
Any questions on this one? Really just giving the town clerk the authority to make non-substantive changes so we don't have to come back to town meeting every time we need to change a number for a section or a comma or something like that. Seeing no questions or comments, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no? It passes by a clear majority. Article 28, Mr. Huff?
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 28 as printed in the warrant.
Mr. Huff?
The Advisory Committee supports adding the amendment to improve our town's general bylaws as a legal document.
Any, this appears to be a pretty routine, what I would call a severability clause. Any questions, comments? Mr. Malone, you rising to speak?
Yeah.
Please.
That's how I'm getting my cardio tonight.
Here we go. How many steps?
So far, it's been 2,742 steps and I'm very short, so it's probably more steps than a normal person. Severability is a typical clause in a contract. I've been a contracts attorney for 35 years. If severability hasn't been in the contracts until now, what else hasn't been in, isn't in those contracts? Who's reviewed those contracts for the validity of the contract? In addition, who has done the negotiating process?
This, let me just, just one moment. This only relates to the bylaws, not the contracts.
Okay, so the severability is in the contracts?
This has nothing to do with contracts. So, but what this says is if the Attorney General or a court said part of your bylaw, the bylaws, aren't legal, the rest of the bylaws don't get thrown out with the bathwater.
So this only pertains to the bylaws and not the contract in itself? Okay?
Correct, sir.
All right.
Seeing no further questions, comments on this article requires a majority. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no? It passes unanimously. Article 29, Ms. Klein.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town accepts Meeting House Road, Liberty Lane, Tailwind Circle, Saddle...
Can you just speak into the mic? It's just a little bit soft.
Sorry. I don't think I've ever been told I'm not loud enough. I move that the town accepts Meeting House Road, Liberty Lane, Tailwind Circle, Saddle Ridge Way, and Silver Fox Road as public ways and further to authorize the Select Board to accept any fee, interest easement, or appurtenance in or upon such ways, including without limitation, any and all easements for utilities and drainage and execute any documents in connection therewithin.
Ms. Klein?
This is a request to accept the following streets as public ways as requested by the Select Board. I will now make separate motions for each street so that they may be voted on individually. There will be a separate motion for each street.
No, no, we, I don't, we do not need separate...
You don't want to do that?
I do not want to do that.
Hey, I agree with that. That's a...
How do you really? Yeah, no, no, we, I rewrote this so that it's a single motion for all of the roadways here. I mean, if someone has a problem with one of these roadways, we could always divide it out, but let's, let's treat them as a group.
That's awesome. So I gotta forget all that I just said. We have Meeting House Road, Liberty Lane, Tailwind Circle, Saddle Ridge Way, and in the warrant, it said Silver Fox Run. There's a change due to a scribner's error in the warrant. It has been corrected in the actual motion. It is now Silver Fox Road.
So this is just to bring private roadways into the public domain? Sir, question?
Recently, one...
Name?
Sorry, Chris Henry, 30 Boardman Street. Recently, at one of the meetings, I can't remember which, there was some discussion about, I believe it was Liberty Lane and Meeting House, that portions of the roadway that are, had originally as part of the site plan, have been sort of carved out to provide some on-street parking. And through discussions with the DPW, that parking was eliminated. There was some discussion as to whether the parking that remained for visitors was adequate. Does it make sense to table those two accepted streets until that issue is resolved?
If anyone wants to comment on that, I'll take that comment as it stands. Sir, you have a question or a comment?
Not to that.
On, on anything?
Yes.
Well, not anything. Keep, keep it narrow. It's the last article.
On this article. There's been a lot of discussion, Mr. Moderator, tonight about paving and snow and ice removal. And I guess the question I have is, when we accept streets into the town, the taxpayers are going to pay for the maintenance of those streets. So does a developer contribute anything when he is, let's say, creating this subdivision to give the town some kind of financial support and aid for this responsibility that they're taking over or that we're taking over tonight by voting these streets into our tax base?
Not always. Sometimes we negotiate something, any, I mean, it's nothing in the statute for it. Sometimes there is an annuity process. Some towns have a payment that goes into a, kind of an annuity there, but, but basically, no, we take these streets over, we maintain them, we ensure that they're safe and adequate for passage. Usually the developer's long gone by, by this point. Mr. McCarthy?
Richard McCarthy, Norfolk Town Planner. The, the roads that are listed up there on the screen, there was no, they were approved through the subdivision process. There wasn't any special assessment or money that was brought forward by any of those particular developers as part of the road. That's not, that I'm aware of, a common practice that's been done here in the past at all. Meeting House Road, the question came up earlier about Meeting House Road, Liberty Lane. So Liberty Lane is actually, that has the parking the way it was originally approved. Meeting House Road was taken over by the town for the failure by the developer to finish the work. And through working with the DPW Department, they worked with the ZBA to get the road completed. The road was designed to have parking inlets going up, but the thought at the time when that originally was approved was that there'd be more commercial properties going up the hill on Meeting House. But as you see, going up, up to the top of the hill, it's not, there's a bunch of condominiums, it's residential. It's 24 feet wide there. There's no available on-street parking because it's too narrow to do that. One of the things that was discussed is that the condominiums, Meeting House, particularly going up the hill on the left-hand side, they've been discussions with DPW to provide some additional parking on their own property when it comes to events and parties that they need parking for. So they're in the process to work to address that. I don't know if there's been any active discussions on the other condominiums on the right-hand side of Meeting House relative to providing some on-street parking, but there isn't, the desire is to actually get this road accepted and then post it so people aren't parking out there because concerns have been raised relative to public safety with, the road isn't set up for that right now. And to really kind of delay this would, I think, be a concern, risk getting this to be enforceable because right now it's a private road. Once it becomes a municipal road, then it can be posted and enforced accordingly. And that was one of the outstanding issues that was raised. I think parking comes down to individuals trying to manage things too. You have to kind of, I think, you know, because they are both condo associations, it, what, one of the things we've thought and they probably even think of this is, you know, I have a party, can I, you know, park at your neighbors and kind of, you know, you have a collective group to kind of manage it so you don't spill out in the public way because once it becomes a public way, I'm sure the police department will be, calls will be up there ticketing people. So they're going to have to figure it out, so to speak, on their own a little bit. That's not a great answer, but it's the best I could provide on that issue.
Thank you. Barry, do you have something to add?
Yeah, I'd sort of add a quick value add. So by the town accepting these roadways, I now can submit to Chapter 90, so actually increase our Chapter 90 funds. So it's not going to be a whole lot of money we'll get for these streets, but it'll be probably a couple thousand dollars that'll go towards paving the roads in town.
Sir?
Hi, Marty McNulty, Winterbury Way. I'm wondering, who is paying for the maintenance of these streets before they became public ways?
So the maintenance and upkeep of them is responsible to the developer. So the developer, when they're ready to have the roadways accepted, it goes, through the whole construction, there's observations that are done, either through the DPW Department with the road construction or in some cases, a private consultant works on behalf of the planning board to make sure things are constructed appropriately through the process and then monitors the construction. And then when it's ready to be accepted, the Selectmen refer it to the planning board, which the planning board makes a recommendation, whether it's in suitable form to be accepted. The planning board did make that recommendation to have these roads accepted. And then, so they're, up until this point, the developer's responsible for maintenance once, and if they're accepted by the town, then the general maintenance is provided by the taxpayers like the other roads in the town.
Thank you. Was it the developer paying or was it the condo fees for the people living in those condos paying?
Well, I mean, that, that can vary development to development. There's usually a...
Well, let's take these streets in particular.
There's a, there's usually a turnover point with a condominium development where the developer does it until a certain number of units are sold. Every project's different. And then the condo association would be responsible for it. Not every project's the same. A regular subdivision, the developer usually owns the road, so they might hold that liability a little bit longer. So it's not the same in every circumstance.
So just a quick point.
So it's entirely possible to turn a condo complex over to the town?
Well, no. So condo complexes are different.
The roadways, no, just the roadways.
Well, no, but even condo complexes themselves, if they're not a subdivision, those roads are never roads, those are driveways. So that's not the same thing. Here, these were roads created through a process that would allow them to become public. A general condominium does not have roadways per se, they have driveways.
Okay, yet they all are taxed the same way?
Well...
Real estate tax-wise. Thank you very much for your time.
Sir?
Ernie Alex, 40 and O Street. Do we have as-built drawings for these particular roadways to be taking over?
We have as-built drawings for, we don't have for all these roads. We have Tailwind Circle, which was completely done by the developer at their expense, no town involvement. Silver Fox Road, similarly, it was completely done by the developer. Saddle Ridge Way was one that the planning board had to pull the bond to complete the roadway. So we do not have an as-built of the plan. DPW worked with contractors of some of their own to finish the road based on the approved plan that was done by the planning board. And similarly with Meeting House Road, we do not have an as-built planned for that that was based on the approved plans working through DPW. Those are both, and Liberty Lane as well.
So we got a pig in a poke if we don't have a roadway that we know where the utilities are?
We know where the utilities are.
So you'll have an as-built?
Yeah, we don't have a complete as-built from what was completed afterward. Yeah, we don't have a complete as-built from what was completed afterwards. The... Where the catch basins are and all that, with the final payment and the grades on...
Not so much where the catch basins are, where the utilities are that are buried.
Let's not have back and forth. I think what he's saying is, we know where the utilities are.
Well, without as-bills, you don't know where the utilities are. I'm going to be doing this for 55 years, so I do have a little familiarity with it. Do we have, Mr. Moderator, do we have release of liens to our treasurer's office for work that was done on these roads, so they can't come back onto us, contractors, for not paying prevailing wages, if necessary, or wages paid, period? If not, we, as a town, are responsible for picking up the difference.
I don't know what title work has been done. I'm assuming none of this is to authorize takings, so I'm assuming that some rudimentary review of the title will be done before we accept deeds. That's all I can assume.
This wouldn't be taking. This would be...
I just said it's not takings.
But this would be payment to workers.
I understand what a lien is. A title review would reveal whether they exist or not.
Thank you.
Ms. Jones, do you have a question?
We allow open-space subdivisions, which means the developer can adjust what they build, where they build it, if they give us a section of their development as open space. Or do any of these have an open-space section? Do we have the deed to them before we accept the street? And is there a problem if we do accept the street, which I understand maintains the street? And can we later go back and say, "You still owe us the open space"?
I don't know if any of these have open-space parcels.
The subdivision, Tailwind Circle, which is Norfolk Landing, does have open space. We have the deed which will be recorded with the roadway deeds, once we go through... So, the... This one step is the laying out of the acceptance of the road. The next process after this will be get the deeds to have those recorded. We do have the deed for Tailwind Circle. The one exception is, as I mentioned at the Selectmen's meeting I mentioned tonight, is that Saddle Ridge Way was taken over by DPW. If we don't... If we're unable to acquire the deed to the road or the open space from the developer, we might have to be back at this. But we're having title exams done now to see if we can acquire those two.
Thank you for the question. Seeing no further questions at the mic, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
It passes by a clear majority. That concludes our business. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Drive safe. Good night.